Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Flournoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, we had a couple of things come up today that are going to be withdrawn from the agenda, so we will not be taking action on them now or in the future. First would be the second action item, considering temporary outdoor liquor license for FACC. And then also the fifth item, which is a change order to the downtown facade project. So both of those will be withdrawn from this evening's agenda. And then we will have a recommendation to table, a resolution later in the meeting. I'll have Mike talk about that at that point in time. Any other changes or additions to this evening's agenda? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the May 8th council meeting. We have library board minutes, the May 19th payroll of $111,352.81, approval of the April finance report. We have a resolution of employment in the Park and Recreation Department for season employment, and also total claims in the amount of $312,450.1. Among that, we do have one claim that is above $75,000. That is to Cedar Valley sod and seeding for $89,979.52, which is related to the work that was done at the country club over the winter. So any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Flournoy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, counsel, we'll move to our appearances, and we'll start with our library representative, Afton.
What do you guys want to know?
What do you got to tell us?
Well, I was going to ask if you could please close the street on Adams between the library parking lot driveway and the alley, like where Doxton has their parking lot, like not close that, not close the library.
Sure.
Just that area in between, because we're having our summer reading kickoff day on June 3rd in the afternoon.
Very good.
Good.
Every what?
You do this every year.
We do. Although last year, we were actually out at the Iowa Fairground, or the Charleston County Fairgrounds, because...
Didn't need to close the street.
Yeah. But now we're back at our old location.
Okay. You've done that, we've done that before, counsel.
Yeah.
We have closed Adams for the reading event, so I'd recommend approval of the request.
Move approval.
Moved by Flournoy.
Second.
Second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. See you guys at kickoff day. See you guys at kickoff day.
Thank you. We have another request, counsel, from the VFW for parking space closure for a June 10th event. Is there a representative from VFW here?
Mr. Mayor, I advised her that she answered all the questions.
Okay.
I would represent her if the council had any questions. I talked to her at length Friday, last Friday, sir.
Great. So this is a combat vets charity ride event?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
And let's see. Just so that we get it for the record, the time period would be?
1:00 PM. She thought, the bicycles are leaving Mount Pleasant, traveling here, so they're going to be kind of spread out, but she thought between 1:00 and 2:00 PM, they would be arriving.
And other vehicles besides cycles?
Yes, they have escort vehicles, and then some support vehicles. It sounds very organized. Their main reason, which impressed me to close it, is to make it safer, instead of the bikes traveling the wrong way on the one-way street, if they could block off both parking sides, the bikes could then proceed up there, and they would stay out of the way of the power wagon that may still be going on at that time, the power wagon parade and rally uptown.
Okay.
Would the timeframe, would that 1:00 to 2:00 be adequate, or would they leave you, like say, from 1:00 to 4:00, or something like that?
They thought it'd be a very short time, because they have a couple other destinations, so they thought probably 3:00 or 4:00 would be, they would be arriving about 1:00 or 2: 00 and leaving by 3:00 or 4:00, sir.
And as particular, street closing?
Is it just parking closing?
Yes, sir.
Or is it just, okay.
Yes, sir.
And it's the parking that's along the VFW, or is it?
They talked in that block. My assumption is it's both the north and south of that block, but it might just be the north side.
The request says Broadway from Court to B Street, north and south sides, parking spaces 1 to 4.
Thanks, sir.
The other thing is, didn't we close that block for the power wagon?
I think we did.
Yeah, I think we did, because they added for additional, so I think we just extend the time.
Yeah. And she's already talked to the director, the supervisor, Mr. Welster, with power wagon to make sure they aren't interfering, and they thought most of the power wagons would be gone by then, so...
Right. Right. So I think with the, with the street already blocked off, I don't know whether we gave that a time period to the power wagon folks, whether we were open up, but I think we just probably keep that closed.
Just keep the street closed.
Yeah.
I'd whether we do that.
Okay. Moved by Flournoy to extend the time period where the Broadway is closed from Court to B Street till 4:00 PM.
Second.
Okay. Second by Revolinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, we have a presentation about a warranty program, and we have a representative from NLC Service Line Warranty Program, Ashley Shewarski. Pronounce that right?
That was good.
Okay, thanks.
I know some of you already have these, but...
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and counsel, for having me here this evening. My name is Ashley Shewarski, and I represent the National League of Cities Service Line Program. Our service line program is the only one that's endorsed by the National League of Cities, but also here in Iowa by the Iowa League of Cities as well. The company, though, that I actually work for is called Utility Service Partners, and we administer the program. And we are a Better Business Bureau business with an A-plus rating, as well as we did win the Torch Award for Marketplace Ethics from the Better Business Bureau. So that is something that we are very proud of and are always striving to maintain that high level of ethical standards while conducting business. What our program really is designed to do is to help address the public policy issue of our aging infrastructure. We know that communities all across the US really have been doing their part to either upgrade or maintain their public infrastructure, but the homeowner's portion of these lines were kind of being forgotten about. So that's actually why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like ours readily and easily available to cities and towns all across the United States. So they went out, did the research on your behalf, and we were the company that they did choose to provide this program. So what we do is we would partner with the city in order to make our completely voluntary program available to your residents. And we provide homeowners with optional protection on their external water lines, external sewer lines, as well as in-home plumbing. And we provide our services with a complete turnkey approach for the city, where we handle all of the aspects of the program, the marketing, billing, claims management, and customer service. And there's absolutely no cost for the city if you choose to participate in the program, and the city would actually receive an incremental revenue stream for their participation as well. What I always find to be the biggest benefit of the program is that it really just helps to raise awareness. Pretty much every city that I speak with, I hear the same type of thing, that if a resident does have some sort of issue with one of their external lines, typically their first call is to someone here at the city. And then you go out only to find that the issue is actually on the homeowner's portion of the line. And then you're left being the bearer of bad news, letting that resident know that this is something that is their responsibility, and then they're left to find a reputable contractor and put this large bill for something that they either thought may have been covered by their homeowner's insurance or by the city, which all of us here know that neither of that is the case. So I always kind of think of our program as a free public awareness campaign, because all of the residents within the city would actually receive a letter in the mail, and the beginning of that letter is really just an educational piece, letting homeowners know that these lines are something that they are responsible for, and that the city has partnered with us in order to make this voluntary program available to them. So even if someone chooses not to enroll, at least in the future, they are well aware that this is something they're responsible for, and that the city really tried to take a proactive approach at helping educate them of this. Also, it really can give your residents peace of mind, because they know for just a few dollars a month, if they choose, they're able to transfer the risk of these lines onto us, a reputable company that is not only endorsed by the National League of Cities, but also the Iowa League of Cities. And if they were to have an issue, they'd just give us a call 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year, and we would actually dispatch a local licensed plumber or contractor to do the repair. So that's another huge benefit of our program, that we only use local area contractors for all of our work. And we do that for many reasons, but mainly we want to keep as much money here within your city's local economy as possible, as well as your local contractors would be familiar with the city's local codes, and will make sure to do the work up to your standards as well as ours, which includes to get all of the proper permits for that work. And we really let you, as a city, be as much or as little involved in this contractor selection as you would like. What actually happens is once we partner with the city, we would develop a contractor network that would specifically service the claims for the city of Fairfield. And some of our city partners will provide us a list of contractors that they're familiar with, are already working with, or are well-known within the community. Other ones want to stay out of it as much as possible. Either way, is completely fine with us, but with all of our contractors, we do go through a detailed vetting process, where we make sure that they are local, that they're licensed, that they have the proper amount of insurance, they do not have any open complaints with the Better Business Bureau, as well as we conduct background checks and drug screenings. We always just want to make sure that it's someone that a homeowner feels comfortable with coming to their home, as well as potentially inside of their home. As for our coverage, we do offer three completely separate involuntary programs. We offer an external water line coverage, external sewer line coverage, as well as the in-home plumbing. Our two external products are set up very similarly, where we begin to cover those lines wherever they become the residence's responsibility, all the way to where they would daylight inside of the home. So if a homeowner were to have an issue, whether it was a broken, cracked, leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog that just needs cleared out, as well as covering the thawing of frozen external water lines, they just give us a call, we send out one of those local contractors, and what they receive for their coverage is actually up to $4,000 towards each and every repair incident. Excuse me. So this is actually something that greatly separates us from other companies out there, is that ours is always on a per-incident basis. So we do not have an annual or a lifetime limit, as well as we would never limit the number of incidents or claims that someone can have in a calendar year. So again, it is always up to that $4,000 towards each and every repair incident, but if the repair was also needed in the public street, then they receive up to an additional $4,000 towards public street repair, as well as up to an additional $500 for public sidewalk repair. And again, that's always on a per-incident basis, as well as we would never have a service fee or deductible, because we do not want a $50 or $100 service fee to deter someone from actually giving us a call and getting their issue taken care of. We really have come to find that when someone chooses to enroll in our program, they typically are more proactive about actually getting their issue taken care of, because they know the cost of determining the issue and getting that repair done is not coming out of their own pockets. As for our third product, it is the in-home plumbing, and this one actually was kind of developed by request of our current city partners. It was the missing piece of the puzzle, and this would cover any water, sewer, or drain lines that are in the home after the point of entry, that either could be broken or leaking. It also includes any lines that may be embedded under a slab, as well as a basement floor, and the coverage for the repair of clogged toilets. And this is very similar, where there is never service fees or deductibles, no annual or lifetime limits, no limit on number of claims that someone can have in a calendar year, and for the in-home, it's always up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. Also, another feature of our program is actually the revenue for the city. So what a city does receive in return for their partnership with us is actually 50 cents per month for paid warranty contract. So essentially, if a resident did choose to enroll in all three products, the water, the sewer, as well as the in-home plumbing, then the city could receive up to $1.50 per month per household, and that is paid to in the form of a revenue every January. And a lot of our cities, partners choose to do different things with this. Obviously, a city can choose to do anything that they like. Some just put it back into the general fund, but most commonly, a lot of our partners will use it to set up a fund that, to help low-income residents that may be having trouble paying a utility bill from month to month. Also, some of our partners have used it when a resident has a leak and a large water loss. I know cities already try to do their best to help residents in that situation, so it can kind of go to help in that aspect of the budget as well. I know the big thing everyone is always intrigued about is how we market our programs, so we only ever market by direct mail. So you never have to worry about us calling, door-to-door, anything like that. We standardly have three mail campaigns per year, in the spring, the fall, and the winter, and the only reason why we have those three campaigns is because we offer three products. Each of our mail campaigns is always geared towards one specific product at a time, and the reason why we do that is just to limit any type of confusion. We always want residents to be well aware that these are separate products, that they do not have to choose any of them or any combination of them. So we always do keep our marketing to one at a time, but that never deters anyone from giving us a call or going to our website and choosing whichever product or whichever combination that they would like at any time. Also, we would never mail to your residents unless we did have your review and approval prior. So before each and every campaign, we do send you a copy of that marketing letter for your review. Once we get the approval, we give you an exact mail date, but if for some reason we would not get the approval, even if you've approved it three other times, we would never mail to your residents for that campaign. So you always have complete control over what goes out and when it goes out. We always want you to have input on that message, as well as be well aware of exactly what your residents will be receiving. Our standard marketing letter, the beginning really is an educational piece, and then it is an introductory letter, where the city is introducing this voluntary program, but it clearly states that we're a separate company providing this service, as well as that it's always voluntary for your residents. It does go out with the city's either logo or letterhead, and then it's typically signed either by an elected official, appointed official, or just the city as a whole, introducing the program. But the bottom of that letter has our logo, our phone number to call with questions or to enroll, same with our website, or they can return the bottom of that form directly to us. So the city's really only involvement is that introductory piece, but once someone chooses to enroll, all of the correspondence is directly between us and them. We handle the billing, the claims, and everything like that. We know the city has enough going on, you don't need anything else added to your plate here. And really, once we partner with the city, we try to be as transparent as possible, where all of our city partners actually get access to an online partner portal, and this would give anyone here access to a lot of good, real-time information. We can log on there at any time and see the number of residents enrolled, the number of claims filed, as well as keep track of that accruing royalty. What I find most important is it gives you access to our customer satisfaction surveys. So every resident that files a claim receives a survey, and everyone that is returned, good, better, indifferent, is uploaded onto that portal, that we can log on there at any time and take a look at that, but it allows us to keep track of our internal customer service in our call center when someone is filing a claim, but also of our local contractors, since they are the face of our company. We always just really want to make sure they're doing the work up to our standards as well as yours, and if there is any issue, we really can work to rectify that as quickly as possible. And to date, we are now partnered with over 400 communities all across the United States, and we do have 42 partners now in the state of Iowa. We have two new ones since this. The city of Eldridge and Panora are two newest. And I know I've rambled on to you here, and some of you already heard this one, so I'm sure you may all have some questions for me, though.
Thank you, Ashley.
You're welcome.
I know you're actually very thorough, if so, if anyone's hearing it for the first time, I think there's a lot of good information there. Yes, John?
I have several questions.
Sure.
Where's your home office?
So we are right outside of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
Where?
It's, well, in Cannonsburg.
Okay. I would need to know, like, what, you know, like, what would a typical contract cost?
Sure.
You know, if we're promoting this, I'd like to have an idea.
So our pricing is $7.75 a month for the sewer line coverage, $6.75 a month for the water line coverage, and $9.99 for the in-home plumbing.
Okay.
They're all separate. It's always month to month, but if someone chooses to sign up and pay annually, they receive a $5 per product discount, but that never locks a homeowner into a year agreement with us. If they need to cancel for any reason at any time, they give us a call, and we refund any unused premium.
That was one of my questions. How about pre-existing conditions, like health, health insurance? I mean, you know, I got a real bad clogged drain in a basement, and, you know, can I call you and, you know, save $300?
To be enrolled a week ahead.
Yeah, dude, yeah.
So we do not have any type of pre-existing condition limitation. When someone calls to enroll, they certify that their line is in proper working order, but we do not go out and inspect the line, so it's kind of on the honor system. We know it happens, but...
Yeah. If you get a call the next week, and you say, "Oh, you tough luck, it just came up," and you fix it.
Mm-hmm.
Gee. Okay.
You're on your honor, John.
Yeah, so there is... I'm not going to say it, but I'm just curious.
But you could have issues in the past, if you got them taken care of, you're able to enroll. It's really just on that day that you're calling to enroll, they ask, "Is your line working at this point?" And as long as it is, you can sign up.
I guess you should tell, tell the council the reasons you would not cover some, and I think the only ones that you mentioned to us in committee meeting was negligence on the part of the homeowner.
Yeah, so we cover the lines. Sometimes people will try to get an apparatus or sprinkler system or something like that covered. We cover the main laterals or the pipes inside the wall, depending on the coverage. We would not cover, you know, if someone was out doing work in their front yard on something else, and it's negligent on their behalf, you know, that they broke their own line, not on purpose, but that would be something that would be...
If you plant a tree next to your line, and five years later, it's destroying the line, you're covered.
Yeah, tree roots are probably the most common claim, so...
Okay. The utilities, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, what percentage have you seen of residents of cities actually join the program once the cities instituted it and promoted it and put it out there?
So our national average is about 25% of residents choose to enroll in a program.
What about your Iowa?
Iowa's 35%.
Okay.
I think because all of the residents here typically are responsible all the way to the main for both water and sewer, so that repair is typically more costly, and sometimes you notice when the street's getting tore up a little bit more, so I think that that's what leads to the higher response rate.
Okay. One question. What's the length of contract between the city?
So the city, our standard contract is three years, but at any time within those three years, if you don't approve the marketing material, we never mail to your residents, as well as, that's always negotiable, so...
Is anything in force if the city were to pull out? I mean, don't those also have to line up, or you'll continue to work with the customer?
So we will not, we will not continue to mail to your residents. If the city were to pull out, any residents that were currently enrolled in the program are able to keep that, but we would not market to new residents.
Okay.
So if we decided not to renew the contract, and you had a customer pay a year ahead yesterday, they're covered for that year?
Correct, and as long as they continue to pay. It's just, we would not solicit new business, or anyone that's not currently enrolled would not be eligible to enroll.
And we'd stop receiving the revenue for your use of our logo?
Correct.
What have you?
So is the only way a homeowner can pay for this through their water bill, or can they deal directly with you as an insurer?
Sure. So we do not put it on your water bill. We do all of the billing. So when someone chooses to enroll...
So it's all billed separately?
Correct.
It's not on the city's billing?
Correct.
Doesn't have to come through this office at all?
No.
To be just given back as a check?
Correct. So really, moving forward, the city's only responsibility is, we will send you a copy of that marketing letter via email before each and every campaign. We send that over, and we ask for your review and approval, and that's really the responsibility of the city. But all of the claims management and billing, that's everything, is done directly between us and that homeowner.
And to be clear, our logo's on the top of the letter, and our city administrator probably will sign it at the bottom, and then at the very bottom will be all their contact information.
Is there a level of coordination, and there probably is, but if you could describe it, between the company and our distribution department that may be called out for an issue, and there is a break, and there is something that's, that is in the service line of that property owner, is there a way that they can know that that person is a subscriber to your program?
So we standardly don't give out all of that information just for privacy issues, because everything that the city has is public knowledge, so we don't, but if you ever asked us, we could always let you know. We do really find that a lot of times, it really does deter residents from calling the city to come out to look at that, because they know they have the coverage, so they're going to call us. We'll come out to figure out if it's on the resident's portion of the line, we'll do that repair, even if we find it's on the city's portion of the line, we still pay for that contractor to come out and determine the issue.
So that could reduce the workload from, from some of our distribution folks, too.
At some level. What was the recommendation of the committee who looked at this?
Committee recommended that two council to approve it.
Yes.
That'll be the first action.
Okay. Hey, counsel, any other, any other questions? So is that if, if we go ahead and approve an agreement, what would be your timeline to start reaching out to residents?
Sure. So what we actually do is, after we get an agreement, we have something called an onboarding call, most likely be between Mike and myself, probably Joy, too. And what we do is we really just let you know exactly what to expect moving forward, and we begin customizing that letter for your review and approval. All of that probably takes, depending on how quickly we get things, I would say about two months, depending, but...
Okay. And I'm sorry, did you say you did some phone solicitation as well, or just the mailing?
We do not do phone solicitation. The only time we will call a resident is once, if the city would like us to, it's completely up to you. When someone enrolls and provides us with their phone number, we give them a call to make sure that they receive their terms and conditions, and that they know how to file a claim, and let them know we have other products available if interested, but we only do that if the city wants us to.
That's interesting, and you find that the one letter, promotional letter, is enough to get 25 to 30% response.
Well, you send, you send multiple letters.
We said, we do three letters.
Three letters, okay.
And that's typically, the 35% is after about two to three years.
Got it.
So, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Hey, counsel, there's a, then a, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me.
Appreciate your presentation. There is a recommendation by the utilities committee to give us a try.
Yes, unanimously.
Pardon me?
Unanimously.
Okay, so if you want to make that a motion to approve...
The first action, yes. I'll move that we endorse the program.
Okay. Moved by Flournoy?
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Flournoy?
Yes.[1637.97]
Thompson?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next council will move then to a public hearing, and this is on the issue of the control burning that's proposed in Fairfield, and, uh, I want to ask Chief Vaughn, uh, Scott, do you have anything more to offer? Uh, we did receive a, a letter, I think the council received a letter today from Carol Simmons, one of the neighbors for the house on, that that was, that had been considered, but would more broadly had some concerns about notification, spreading fire, smoke, those sorts of things. Any, anything more that you want to address there?
It's gonna be, yeah. This is just you giving me, or us, the authorization to do up to two a year, and then after that we will, you know, decide on the properties, um, between, you know, the homeowner, um, having properties that they want this to be done with, uh, to save them costs of demolition and to give us training, so, uh, case-by-case basis, um, you know, as we saw with 106 South Maple, if it's not good for everyone, which I said repeatedly, you know, we're not gonna do it. It's, it has to work for everyone.
Got it. Okay, thank you. So this is public hearing. I see Marshawn Roth here. I suspect she has some comments for us. Welcome.
Thank you. As an aside, those of us that had tree damage appreciate you guys picking up.
Very welcome. Thanks for the, the notice.
Who was it? Um, yes, Carol Simmons, I'm Marshawn Roth, and Carol Simmons did send a copy of a letter to you all, um, and she phrased all of our concerns, all of my concerns, much better than I could sit here without reading it myself. But, um, did everybody have a chance to get the, the net, the letter and read it? Um, some of the concerns that we had was, um, the cost, the preparation, traffic control, man-hours to, uh, control, conduct the burn, and how do these compare with the cost of sending firefighters, uh, to, say, a Tamwa? Um, and if the property is being burned at the request of a business interest, should they not be asked to cover some of the costs to the city? Does the city's liability insurance cover such planned burns? All of these, um, this letter are questions that have not been asked or have not been answered when have been asked. And, you know, Fire Chief Scott, thank you, has wisely promised not to go forward with burns if neighbors are not on board, and we thank him for his promise to exclude 106 South Maple following the last council meeting. But if the city does go forward with the program, a formal policy does need to be in place to, first of all, to notify neighbors in writing if nearby property is under consideration. Notice should include, uh, potential hazards. Might there be damage from smoke or ash and nearby trees and hedges could be damaged? Or, you know, what actions are the neighbors supposed to do? And will there be provisions for neighbors with breathing problems? I, I really feel like we need to have a standards that, and we were talking about it today, that the house on the south side, we weren't worried about her. There was, uh, there was enough distance that we didn't feel like there would be any problem, but on the other side, there wasn't. And, you know, there's somewhere along the line, I'm sure there's a magic number. Um, the, uh, DNR does have a six-tenths of a mile, um, which is unrealistic in the town, but, you know, they must be doing some kind of investigation into what is safe on this. So other than that, thank you for not burning across the street, but I think some of these things do need to be approached in a logical manner so that anybody down the road, here's what we need from you, here's what we will do, and it would make transition a whole lot easier. Does everybody have a copy?
Everyone received the email, yes. Okay. Thank you, Marshawn. Scott, do you have any comments on that? Do you?
I think the six-tenths of a mile you were talking about is how far the two properties have to be apart, the two that are burned in the year. They have to be six-tenths of miles apart from each other, is how I read that, and that's how, that's what the standard is.
The barn and house.
Yeah, they have to be six-tenths of a miles away from each other. Um, as far as the, as far as the preparation, uh, we would definitely, um, once we decide on a property, uh, give notice to, uh, residents. Um, as far as overtime money, there would be no overtime money. We're a volunteer department, so it would just be extra training that the guys would be doing. We'd be blocking roads off, um, and, um, you know, give, uh, people plenty of notice that that would be happening, so.
Scott, any comment on the, you know, the air quality issue?
There's always a, there's always a question about air quality when you do something like this. Absolutely.
Um, you've trained over in a Tamwa. How do they handle this there? Do they have anything, um, resolution-wise or ordinance-wise that identifies, um, some, um, general requirements that need to be in place before doing something like that?
I don't know word for word what they have. I can check with Chief Miller, but I know that they do do up to two a year. Uh, they have for the last three years done up to two a year.
Right.
To get those down.
I'm certain there's probably something that they have.
Yep.
On record that they have to go by, so that would be nice to see.
Scott, I can, I think I'm gonna recommend that Public Safety work with you on this to come back with the parameters for notification, uh, and, and any other safeguard elements that, um, that we should be aware of, that we have in a policy, stated policy, because if it is something that we're, that we're going to do going forward, then it, I think it would be best if we had something, uh, in, in our ordinances to, to point to.
Yep.
In order, in order for this, and that would give us another opportunity to have public input, public discussion.
Getting ready to redo, uh, codification, and this wouldn't be a bad thing to put in there also going forward if we decide to go this route, so.
Right, so I know Katie's not here tonight, but I think if we, we could pass on to Katie to have her committee meet and, and just to discuss some of this with you and then come back with some formal recommendations.
Yep, just so everyone knows.
Does everyone agree?
We have no properties planned going forward, just to make the, just so everyone knows.
Okay.
So.
Great.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Uh, so council, we will not take the action item up tonight on, uh, the controlled burn, so entertain a motion to table this item.
So, ta, moved.
Move to table. Uh, Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you, and thank you, Marshawn.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Okay, so next council, again, we, we have a withdrawn item. The next action item would be the designating the low bidder on the telescopic bucket truck for the street department, and I know, um, Daryl's not here this evening. Mike, if you could, uh, lead us through that.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the items in our, uh, 2018 fiscal budget in the road use tax fund is the purchase of a new aerial lift truck. Um, there's $140,000 budgeted for that purchase. There's typically a three-to-six-month lead time, and so we've put together a bid item and went out to bid for that truck, and so we're bringing back to you the request to accept the bid and move forward with the purchase, assuming that lead time and the purchase will happen in fiscal 2018. So the bid, uh, was for a 35-foot aerial lift truck, gasoline chassis, and the bids, we received four bids, one from IAD Equipment for the chassis, $44,026 and no cents, for the equipment portion of the truck, the lift portion, $101,242.25, for a total of $145,268.25. We did receive a second bid from a local vendor, Fessler Auto Mall, now for the chassis only, $34,077. The third bid from ABM Equipment and the apparent low is, the chassis amount was $32,736. The bucket lift, uh, equipment, $56,830. Grand total for the chassis and bucket was $89,566.05. The fourth bid from Truck Equipment out of Des Moines, Iowa, the chassis, $33,227. The bucket portion, $61,195.05, grand total of $94,422. So the apparent low is ABM Equipment. Their bid did meet all of our specifications. We would recommend favorable consideration of the bid from ABM Equipment.
Any questions?
I would move that we accept, uh, ABM Equipment as the apparent low bidder.
I second that. Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. I have a, just a quick question, Mike. Regarding the, uh, the bids that are submitted, can the chassis and the bucket be separated?
Yes.
They can?
They can.
Okay, so you, you could consider a Fessler bid and a ABM bucket?
If I could speak to that, Mayor. Yep, so our policy does allow for a 2% favorable consideration to a local vendor. 2% on the chassis would put the chassis at $33,390, which is still below the local vendor. That's why we recommended ABM Equipment.
Got it. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So we have a.
One other final question. The current, uh, truck that we have that's equipped with this, that will go up for sale?
Yeah, we'll bring that back to council once we've acquired the new piece of equipment and ask you permission to surplus it.
Okay.
Unless we can find a, you know, perhaps the water department or sewer department may want it if there's more value there, but that's likely what will happen, is we'll bring it back for surplus consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. The council, we have a motion and a second to approve ABM Equipment for the new bucket truck and chassis. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to, uh, the consideration for the archaeological proposal for step two, and Melanie will be leading us through this one.
Um, so, step two is the section of the proposed sewer improvements that go from Lambs and Woods along the east side of town, Crow Creek, and ultimately up to campus. Um, the phase one archaeological services that, uh, the city sent out a request for proposals for, or I should say phase one A, involves, um, computer work to determine if there's a potential for archaeological sites, uh, on the proposed route. So this would be such as looking at, or not computer work, office work, uh, looking at plaques to see if there were, um, um, old homesteads in the area, looking at old aerial photos to see if there's some potential. Once that work is done, if, if, um, the selected archaeologist determines that there's a potential for something, then the city would go up for quotes or, or bids for a phase one, which would involve actual digging of those specific areas. By doing this one A first, it allows the city to do the whole length at a lower cost and then come back and dig only where necessary. So, um, after the requests for proposals were sent out, the city received three bids. Um, the low bid was from Rolling Hills Consulting Services of Washington, Iowa, at $1,250. Watsi Valley Archaeology out of Anamosa also submitted a proposal for $4,447.05, and Earthview Environmental out of Corleville submitted a proposal for $5,250. Uh, the committee, environmental, no.
Utilities.
Utilities committee, uh, considered this before the pred, before the meeting and, um, unanimously, unanimously recommended the Rolling Hills.
Unanimously, also.
That one, yeah, yep. Recommended Rolling Hills Consulting at $1,250.
Okay. Thank you, Mel. Now, and obviously you look at this number and you would generally want some qualifying statement that they've done this before, they know what they're doing, they know what they bid, and you can vouch for that?
Yes.
Okay, great. The council, we have a recommendation to approve the bid from Rolling Hills Consulting of $1,250.
And move approval?
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Uh, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rasmussen or Revulinski?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mel, appreciate it. Uh, next council will move to, uh, an engineering services agreement for reconstruction on East Adams, and I think Mr. Hausner's going to address this with us from French Reniker. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening. So, probably about a month ago, you signed an agreement with us to redesign sanitary sewer. Uh, I think it was, it's, right now it's looking at 105 feet of sanitary sewer under Adam Street. Um, this street replacement is above that, plus another 330 feet of street. The sanitary sewer is so deep, it's about 18 feet at the deepest, uh, that even using trench, trench boxes and coming up at a one-to-one slope, it's gonna pretty much take the whole curb-to-curb street out, uh, in the sewer replacement. Uh, so it's my assumption that Daryl, um, thought that would be a good time to do some street replacement on there. Uh, the street replacement is, like I said, a little over 300 feet more than sewer replacement. Uh, it starts at, I believe it is Maple Street and goes 440 foot to the west. Uh, we did have some of that, uh, street reconstruction was in our ESA engineering agreement for the sewer work. Uh, it was going to be all one bid, uh, so what this does is add another 300 and some feet to it, plus a separate bid. So the idea is that you'll bid and get constructed the sewer replacement first. It will be a gravel surface for a couple of months, and then probably sometime in the fall, uh, it'll be put back with PC pavement.
Okay, thanks, Steve. And the total, uh, engineering agreement is 17,400. Is that the number we're working with? I think so.
Yes, 17,400. That includes the design, helping you through the letting, and part-time construction observation, watching, checking materials, checking quantities.
Great, thank you. Council, any questions, first, Steve, regarding this project?
Um, yeah, does that, that 17,000 includes what we already agreed to with the 7,500 or so for the engineering services agreement? For the point repair?
This is all in addition to and on top of the.
So.
The amount in the sewer agreement.
Okay. So it's gonna be 21,000, the agreements then, or?
Totally.
24,000, the agreements between the previous one and this one, for all the construction in that one area?
Yes, I don't recall the specific number on the sewer. Sorry, didn't bring that one with me.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, add those two up, that would be the total of this street and the sewer replacement.
Okay, so entertain a motion to approve the engineering services agreement? Okay, moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Um, any other questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Uh, next council, we have consideration of a certi, certification of substantial completion of proposed sanitary sewer conveyance. Melanie?
All right, this is for step one, again, from the treatment plant up to Lambs and Woods. Um, that project was funded with USDA funds, and the contract documents that USDA, um, requires is a little different than French Reniker's standard, um, where typically, once the project's brought to council and you determine it's complete, the warranty period kicks in at that time. The way the, this funding, the EJ CDC documents, the, there is a one-year warranty, and that kicks in at the date of substantial completion. Um, so what you have in front of you on the second page is the certificate of substantial completion, uh, signed by myself, Mike Harmon, and the contractor, and what it states is that the project's substantially complete, and then the last three pages identify the remaining items. And, um, so we feel that the project, other than the treatment plant is not ready to accept the waste, the pipe is fully functional and is considered substantially complete, uh, given the total budget of the project, the remaining items on the punch list are, are very minor, and, um, they, they have not been paid for those items as well, so, uh, that the funds have been held back in order to make sure that they complete those, and at this time, just asking for a resolution for you to accept the, um, substantial completion.
Will, will, uh, will we have something else come before the council, or will this be it?
Um, final exception, what, final, final acceptance of the project will happen when, once the plant is operational. This contractor is required to make the connections between the old pipe and the new pipe to get the, get the wastewater to the plant.
Okay.
So we're gonna be looking at, um, the final acceptance in late 18, probably.
Got it.
So, uh, there will be something, uh, but it will be quite some time before you see something else.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mel, appreciate that, and this is, it's substantial part of the project, too, so we're, we're completing a substantial portion. Uh, entertain a motion to, uh, approve the resolution certifying substantial completion along with the accompanying punch list.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Uh, council, we had indicated earlier, this next item, which is, uh, a resolution approving the construction contract, uh, for improvements, will be table till our next meeting in June, so entertain a motion to table this resolution to our June 12th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy and second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And, uh, next we'll have first reading of an ordinance. And next, we'll have first reading of an ordinance to replace and repeal our fireworks and explosives and throwing and hitting missiles. Essentially, as you know, the legislature approved the sale and use of fireworks in the state of Iowa for about a 20-day period of time during the year. I think our proposal is to, you know, accept that as law, but at the same time, narrow the time period where we allow for the use within the city. So Mike, would you like to speak to what's in the ordinance, or is our public seat?
Katie asked me to.
Okay, I'm sorry, Doug, go ahead.
Katie couldn't be present tonight, but we looked over the ordinance, we approved it unanimously to forward it to full council with just two changes in the version that you have. In Section 2 Sales General Requirements, there was a provision for inspection of premises that are selling fireworks. And there were two different price schedules, one for permanent and another price for temporary. And the permanent inspection fee is $100. Temporary, as listed here, is $200, but we were recommending it to go down to $100. So that's one change, other than from what you've got. And the other change was Section 2 Sales General Requirements, Part B, Number 16. We have business zoning, but we do not have commercial zoning, and the ordinance here has areas zoned for commercial use, so we are going to edit that out, or recommend editing it from a zone for commercial use to zone for business use. Aside from that, everything in here was satisfactory with the committee.
Doug, can you talk about the time periods that are being established?
I'm sorry, I can. So there'll be two periods of time where you can sell fireworks, July 1 through July 8. I'm sorry, this is discharging of fireworks. July, June 1 through July 8, from the, let's see, yeah. June 1 through July 8, hours from 9:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., except on July 4. They can be discharged up until 11:00 p.m. only. And the other timeframe is December 10 through January 3, 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. also, with the exception of December 31, January 1. You can set them off to 12:30 a.m. on January 1. Is that the timeframe you were asking me about?
Yes.
And this would coincide with the state law, is that it?
Yes, for the Fourth of July and also for New Year's Day.
This has to be in place for this first sale of fireworks prior to July 4?
If we want to, it doesn't have to be by state law, they can still sell fireworks under state law, but they can't discharge fireworks, is that right?
So, so again, does this all have to be done prior to being able to discharge the fireworks? Because somebody can go somewhere else and buy them and bring them back.
Right. They can buy them here, in fact.
If we go through three readings of this, one tonight, two weeks, we're getting real close to the Fourth of July.
Yeah, it'll be June 26.
Yeah, exactly, so.
You can suspend rules.
Well, I'm not advocating that, because I'm sure there's going to be people that want to talk about this at some point in time, that are going to find out about it after it's either on the radio or in the newspaper tomorrow. So, you know, if we have people that are concerned with smoke and hazards from burning materials, we're bound to have people that are, have problems with loud explosions or smoke from gunpowder, that kind of thing. So, you know, I don't know how we can get this through three readings and still be within guidelines to do this for the Fourth of July, this Fourth of July. I can see it for January, the time period in December and January, but.
Is.
Mike, I think you had a comment you were going to talk to me about, didn't you? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would lean on John here as well, but basically, we can do anything unless state law says we can do it. And right now, we have conflicting ordinance with state law, so, you know, and again, John jumped in here, but I believe people could probably sell maybe in Fairfield if they have the permit from the state fire marshal. But again, this is something the state has given us last minute. So then, I mean, we're doing the best we can to bring something to you to get in place prior to July 4, and I, you know, I think we're doing the best we can, given the time constraints from the state.
And this is, John, this is state law at this point in time? This has been signed by the governor, and it's not something that begins July 1?
It is state law. Just need to have a public hearing on this ordinance sometime. And passing it through three readings tonight is not what you're advocating.
No.
But yes, you can, you can have your own rules as far as discharge, other than what the state felt would be reasonable. If you wanted to say July 3 and 4 instead of the extended period they give you, you may get some feedback like that around the community. But the idea is, we can't restrict the rules on sale. We added some definitional stuff to this to make sure that it's also clear, heavier stuff, the explosives, it's also regulated by the state fire marshal, not be misunderstood to be something that someone might use or abuse. And then we added a provision as far as not making this into a plaything. You can't point fireworks at other people without committing a misdemeanor under another section of the code. So that's all that we've done so far, except for allowing the discharge.
Okay. John?
So I think Mike and Ed were getting at this, but the point that Darren was making, well, if we don't pass this by July, by June 1 even, according to state law, people can put off fireworks starting June 1. So we have an ordinance against that presently in our town, in our city. So my question is, does our ordinance stand?
No, they can't.
They can't. Based on our ordinance, people can't. We could enforce our present ordinance and just not allow it at all, if we wanted.
So let me just, let me ask our chief of police. Chief, how would you handle that?
I can tell you, we've had a lot of discussion with this. We do have a lot of fireworks use. We are kind of excited, maybe the complaints will, if this ordinance is passed. I can tell you, we rarely cite, because we get a lot of complaints about people shooting off fireworks, but the complaint doesn't want to file a written statement. And so if the officer does not actually see him shoot the fireworks off under the city ordinance and the state law, there's nothing we can do. It's not illegal to possess fireworks, it's illegal to shoot them. So I can think on one hand, the times we've actually had to, been able to cite somebody for fireworks. We do respond to a lot of complaints.
Yeah, so I think the answer is that our police department will deal with it. I think they'll, they'll educate people, "I'm sorry, I know state law says this, but we don't have a local ordinance in place, please refrain until the city passes something." And hopefully, you're not going to get 10 times more calls for something like that.
We're going to tell them to call their local council personnel.
But I think.
We are telling them, we're in the process, we're trying to.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, we're trying to see what the public and the council, which direction they're going, because we do have discretion if we know the ordinance is going to be changing in a couple of weeks. Quite frankly, we don't issue a lot of these tickets anyway, it's not a highest priority. So if the council is telling us, we're probably in the process, we're not going to be out trying to get those last couple tickets before the new ordinance takes effect.
Yeah, and I think it would serve us well to allow a reading tonight, come back on the 12th, see if there's anyone else that shows up for a public hearing, or any feedback that we've gotten from the community, and possibly, at that time, suspend the rules and see if we can get it in place then.
Mayor, if I may, my comments earlier were specifically regarding sale. I think it would be good to have John weigh in, because right now, we are restricting the use, and state law allows us to do that. What state law doesn't allow us to do is restrict the sale, and we have a conflict. Now, maybe, and then, John, if you're not prepared, I completely understand, but maybe just speak to, I know we have some folks in the audience interested in sale. Come June 1, if we don't have an ordinance in place, because there is the conflict with state law, can folks legally sell if they've acquired the permits from the state fire marshal's office?
They can legally sell.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
My understanding of all of our codes is there's a clause in each one that says it will not go up against state law.
Right.
Just a standard clause that we can't, we can't legislate against state law or federal law.
And the discharge part of this, they left us that in the state, changes with the idea that that's consistent with what we do with home rule, otherwise, they don't want to take away the ability of the town to say, "Well, we're still not going to." But the other side is that the rush to sell, if there are people interested in doing that, the state statute, you've all had a chance to look at it, there's going to be very few places in this community that are business zoned, or that are the type of buildings that are setback rules that we read in the state provision are going to work for them. I mean, you've got to have a certain amount of distance between structures, if you're going to have anything housed in a commercial structure or business structure. If you do it in a temporary structure, it has to be a large number of feet away from anything. And so you're going to probably be looking at things more on the outskirts of town and so forth, the kinds of things that the legislature envisioned. And we can't overhaul what the legislature and the fire marshal have as far as what they've orchestrated as far as the sale. Make sure that if sale's going on, we're going to keep track of that, make sure nobody's engaged that might be exposing a risk. And I know one of the things the committee was talking about is, what about the things that are out there just beyond what the state statutory changes are that we can imagine? In other words, if you can have 100 pounds, or 500 pounds, or 1,000 pounds, depending on the type of structure or temporary structure you got, what about, you know, if it's popular, is there going to be a problem with how they get into the community with the next 500-pound load, or 1,000-pound load, or is there going to be a warehouse somewhere that we ought to understand is a warehouse full of more than 1,000 pounds worth of stuff? And what did the fire marshal say about that? And so there'd be probably some Scott Von involvement in this, maybe it's somewhere as far as looking at it from the standpoint of what the fire marshal's doing along with the police.
Okay, thank you, John. I think it's also worth pointing out that some of the other general requirements are 18 and older, that fireworks discharge take place on private property, on real property, not in public places. So that's, that's something that, you know, public parks, streets, things like that are, could be places that people now, you know, feel open and empowered to do that. Obviously, not showing any visible signs of being intoxicated or under the influence. Let's see. Anyway, those are, I think those are other elements that should come out in the discussion about the legal use of the fireworks. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it this time and ask if there's anyone who would like to comment on the ordinance. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing and ask, what is the wish of the council?
We move it from the first to second reading as amended in my prior comments.
Great, thank you, Doug. So motion to approve as amended, first to second.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen.
Comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure about this June 1, the whole month of June, as well as, you know, during the Fourth of July. I think it's going to be, I think it's going to get kind of old, hearing firecrackers pop all over the neighborhood at, you know, 10, 5 to 10:00 p.m., you know, every night in June, I mean, which could easily happen. I don't know, you know, it'll be interesting to hear what kind of feedback we have from the community on it. For one, you know, we can always pass it and always change it after we go through a season and just see how it does, you know, and if we get complaints and all that. But to me, that's a potential issue. I guess I'm willing to, you know, if there's no other, you know, voice from the community about it, and no other concern, and the council doesn't feel strongly about it, I, it wouldn't be a deal breaker for me, I'd probably still vote for it, but just putting it out there as an issue. It's a long time, all of June, you know, five weeks.
Yes. Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Any other comments, counsel? If not, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, in my report, I wanted to call your attention to some good news that isn't final, but nonetheless, it is good news. The stretch of South Highway 1 from Libertyville Road, well, let's just say from Fillmore Avenue South to Libertyville Road, is something that we have applied to the DOT for some more discretionary funding and assistance for improvement in that area. And right now, it is considered a rural two-lane road, which means there are no improved shoulders, and it is two lanes. Our proposal was for three lanes with shoulders, and also a, some sort of a traffic solution at Libertyville Road, whether it be a roundabout or a traffic signal. And we presented to the DOT commissioners a little over two years ago at one of their regional meetings. Fortunately, it was in southeast Iowa, and the commissioners all visited the stretch of improvement that we were considering, so they were all very familiar with it at the time. What they said after that meeting was they liked the size of the project, they liked where it is and what was going on within the community, but they wanted more of a discussion with the local engineers to determine what the cost, the true cost, would be. Took some time for that, but we did receive that information last summer, so we got on the DOT commission's schedule last October, and presented again to the commission the updated information and projected costs for the project. And then we just recently learned that we are in their five-year plan for construction in 2022. It's a $4.2 million project, of which the DOT portion would be a contribution of $3.5 million towards that. The final vote for approving their five-year plan will be June 13, I believe, or 14?
They meet the 12th and the 13th. I believe 13th is tours, and so.
So the 12th.
Yes.
So June the 12th is when they would meet to vote on approving the five-year plan. If we make it through that, then we have a nice project to look forward to in 2022. This is, I think this is really going to be a really great and a needed addition, and the assistance of the DOT on their state highway, obviously, is still welcome, and it's going to really help with all of the developments that we're doing down in that area. I was recalling and mentioning to Mike that we actually originally made an appeal for some funds to do this project back in 2010, when the stimulus projects were still available through the federal government, and this was towards the end of the application process, and we were not approved for the project at that time, but always, we still had a lot of the engineering in place. Jerry Long ever worked on that project for us, so I think it's great news that we've gotten this. And Melanie, I know you've researched some of what that's going to look like, so if you made that presentation.
Yeah, and there's two things attached to your agenda. The one that he has up on the screen is the draft report for DOT. Page 47 has the narrative as to where the DOT gets the money. The bottom number should be page 47. It's a narrative, but it talks about where the DOT gets the money for this. And then page 69 of that report indicates that it's a 2022 report. What this boils down, or what this boils down to for the council is actually the summary that's attached to the agenda. As the mayor mentioned, this is around a $4.2 million project. Cost estimates from 2015 were around $4 million, so to increase it for the future, I'm using, I'm showing a $4.2 million project. With the $3.5 million from DOT, you're still looking at around $700,000 that would have to come from local or city funds. And actually, and Stephen Pedrick could tell me, several years ago, you applied for and received transportation alternatives. and received transportation alternative funds to pave the shoulder of Highway 1 for pedestrian use. The, in June, the city, and I'll represent the city at the commission meeting, that you'll request to Region 15 to move those funds from a paved shoulder program to being part of this project and use it for basically a trail along one side of Highway 1. So that's 320,000 of the 700,000 needed for local match. The remaining of the funds will, would come from the STP allocation. This is the funds that's used for, it was used for paving of D Street, Kirkwood this last year. And support of putting city funds towards this project. If the DOT approves this program, I'll bring it to you at your next council meeting to approve the STP application. But with such a large number potentially coming from DOT, we're only looking at 240,000 from your STP allocation going towards this project. That's roughly two and a half blocks of overlay or about a block of reconstruction. So we couldn't ask for anything better as far as city contribution to this project. And like I said, I'll bring back more details as far as where your fund balance is, cost estimates for this project. I'll bring back the details at your next council meeting if the DOT passes it earlier that, that day.
Great. Thanks, Mel. So we are very fortunate, Steve. Thank you and the Trails Council for the work that you did getting that grant secured years ago. And we did use that as part of our presentation to the DOT. So that, that really did help draw the need and the attention to that, the information that was in that grant. And then also the, you know, the SDP funds are limited and restricted to those zones and areas and streets that are determined to be fundable with, with those federal funds. So this would qualify, which, you know, really does help us as well. So let's hope on June 12th we get a good result.
Can I ask a quick question about the design? So is the design that was proposed and excluded in this budget for a standalone sidewalk on one side?
One side would be a five-foot sidewalk and the other side would be a 10-foot, I believe, more of a trench.
Okay. And is it separate from the road?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then also point out that this budget does not include a specific interchange or intersection improvement. The budget allows for either the roundabout or signalized intersection, but I'm sure once the funds are allocated, there'll be lots of discussion both on the city side, but primarily on, from DOT as to which type of intersection will, will happen.
Will our input be taken on that or do they just decide?
I mean, a state highway, I'm not sure we would.
We think they'll have something to say. We think the, but then again, you know, it's a, they, their, their engineers are local. They, you know, they're here, they're district engineers, so I'm sure they'll probably, you know, view it favorably.
And also, one of the things that was presented to them, the city council approved a traffic study out there and it showed how traffic would increase as the areas developed. And when we were able to do this, when we did the last presentation to the commission, the city was in negotiation with neighborhood builders and developers to start some of that building. So we were able to show that in two years' time from the last time you took, talked with us, this area has developed more. I think from the first presentation to the second presentation, Casey's had also been built and Pilot Grove. So, you know, the DOT, not only is the city seeing it, but the DOT is seeing that this area is developing. So it'd be a good project and we appreciate neighborhood builders and developers being part of it.
Great.
Yes.
Thanks, Mel. We appreciate that and hopefully at our next meeting we'll know something final. The last item I just wanted to bring to your attention, council. On June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, we're going to have a team of architects from the Iowa Architect Foundation in Fairfield. I think I mentioned this about a month or so ago, that we've contracted this group along with the CVB to do a study for our wayfinding signage within the community. And they are going to be very engaged with the community. They're going to have some public meetings to get input from the public. They're going to be working with a group that has been looking at this wayfinding signage area along with all of our economic organizations. And they'll do that work over about a day and a half on Thursday afternoon and all day Friday. And then Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. at the Arts Convention Center, they will do their final presentation and recommendation. So if any of you can either participate in any of the groups that are going to be meeting on Thursday and Friday, there'll, I'm sure be a schedule going out soon, or if you can make that presentation on Saturday, June 3rd at 10:00 a.m. to hear what's proposed. I think that would be very positive, so. It'll be exciting to get that done early in the year so we can potentially get some signage up later in the year. The council will move then to our committee reports, Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
Yes. We already discussed two to three items that we took action on, the archaeological RFP and the utilities service line insurance programs. We unanimously recommended both of those or we already passed those. The third item that we looked at was looking at preparation for step two. And we considered boring versus open cut and putting in that step. And the cost to bore would be about 2.62 million and the cost to do an open cut is 2.34 million. And if you look, we looked at the pros and cons of both approaches. And in total, if you look at the, the risk associated with doing an open cut, the mitigation we would have to do for all the environmental impact and the endangered species, the committee decided even though it's more expensive by about $300,000 or $400,000 to do the boring, we thought that that would be a better approach for the city to take in, in completing step two.
Okay.
We could spend an hour talking about all the details associated with why we need to consider these two, but it's mostly environmental impact if we were to do an open cut.
Okay. Thank you. Next we'll move to Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
And we already addressed the fireworks ordinance as well, so.
Right. Thank you. Project update, Melanie?
Unless there's any specific questions on, on the list that I have here for you, there's just a couple of items I'd like to point out. On the downtown facade, there's the buildings that obviously still have some work to be done, but also the Elks Building, they will start, actually on the Crest Jewel Building, they will start some brickwork probably before your next council meeting on that building. So just be aware in the downtown area. And then on the second page on Walton Lake, there were a couple of public meetings to answer residents' concerns about the drawdown and repair of Walton Lake. I believe all those concerns have been addressed and now the city has sent out notice to all the property owners that, that they'll begin drawing down the level of the lake or July 17th and will begin those repairs August 7th with the construction taking approximately two months. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Thanks, Melanie. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So council, we will move into closed session at this time, so we'll entertain a motion to move into closed session and ask everyone else to clear the council chambers and thank you for attending. The motion to move into closed session via Iowa Code 21.5J to discuss real estate matters?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. We'll move into closed session.